All right, welcome everyone. The board's back in open session. At this point, I think we... First item is we have a welcome from Ames' principal, Mr. Gierman.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Ryan Toye and District 96 Board of Education. Welcome to Ames. As always, glad to have Cow meetings here. When I talked about some of the great stuff going on at Ames, one of our first grade classes, Mr. Becker's class, just had a spaghetti luncheon with spaghetti and garlic bread. It was extra special because they grew the basil for the spaghetti sauce and the garlic for the garlic butter to put on the bread in their hydroponics garden in class. Some parents came in, made homemade spaghetti sauce, added that basil in, put the garlic in the butter, and provided a lunch for our students that they actually grew right there in the classroom. So it was really neat, really neat. Ames Student Council did our Bring In The Change fundraiser that was done before spring break. That's for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And in one week, our Ames families brought in over $1,300 worth of change, just in one week, just loose change. So that's going to be donated to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Ames Student Council tonight, they're wrapping up right now at Chick-fil-A North Riverside. They're doing another fundraiser and they... It's really neat because our student council, not only do they raise these funds for our school, but they actually take ownership in how we spend the money for the school. So if you look at the front entrance of Ames, you'll see a nice Ames Dolphins mat that they were able to purchase with the money they raised last year through their fundraising. And then finally, next week, we're getting ready to take the IAR test, the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, which we call it Ames, the I Am Ready test. And we're getting ready to do that next week. And our own Ms. Ullman in second grade decided to pair up each of our classrooms in K1 and 2 with a grade in 3, 4, and 5, because 3, 4, and 5 take the assessment to make motivational posters for their classrooms. So we have our primary students making motivational posters for our intermediate students as they get ready to take the test. And our PTA gets involved too. They have like a red carpet they put out, well, it's red paper. And they have, you know, little banners and stuff. And it's sort of just motivational. It's taking, you know, a very rigorous test that our students work long and hard, you know, learning the standards. And it's saying, you know, "You guys got this, and we're going to do a great job here at Ames." So we have a lot of neat things going on. It's a busy time of the year. Thank you.
Nice to hear what you guys are up to. Very impressive, as always.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Mullin.
All right, so then next we have public comment. Is there any public comment? If there's no public comments, is there any... Are there any changes that any board member would like to make to the agenda? If not, then we move right...
I'd like to add 20 more policies.
More policies? Well, add that. Segues nicely into our next item, which is committee meetings. First committee is policy. Dan?
Well, we promised a number of items to talk about tonight, and we have delivered, although we've had more in the past, so this shouldn't be too bad. I should note the first six policies that are mentioned. This is, let's see, Policy 240 for Board Member Qualifications, 250 Board Member Term of Office, 260 Board Member Removal From Office, 665 Student Social and Emotional Development, 7185 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited, and Policy 895 Parental Involvement. All of those are five-year renewals with no changes. And some of the next policies are minimal changes, either footnotes or small verbiage changes. So for Policy 220, the Powers and Duties of Board Education Indemnification. Let me look that up here. I think that's one word change from discipline to behavioral in terms of policies. And somewhat interesting policy note here for Policy 430 involving revenue and investments. There are some limitations or some changes in definitions, I think, to short-term investments that I think we were still following up on, and I'm not sure if we have definitive answers coming back yet from, let's see, from the Proviso Township?
Right, so we don't have that updated resolution if there is one, but the recommendation would be to not put the resolution in the policy as we've done in the past. The resolution's from 1999, and that Riverside is unique to, along with other school districts that are part of the Proviso Township Treasures Office, and that it's the township treasure that makes the investment. So the essentially boilerplate policy from press probably should be revised to just state that clearly. And so we put in two other samples from two other districts that are part of Proviso Township Treasure area also, and how they work their policies. So that one probably needs some revision from what press looked like for us initially.
Okay, and then so continuing on, Policy 4100 for Insurance Management. I believe the changes are all related to footnotes. And then for 110 Transportation, those are all footnotes as well. And for Policy 4150 Facility Management and Building Programs, I believe there's an addition of talking about a compliance with a 10-year safety survey that's been added to the first paragraph. And for Policy 4160 Environmental Quality of Building and Grounds, here is a... What? We're talking about, is that it's another, essentially a footnote change. And for Policy 5330 Sick Days, Vacation Holidays, and Levers, I believe this one makes note of Registered Nurse, where previously it was, they were noted just as nurses. And for Policy 615 School Accountability, there are again footnote changes. Which leaves us with one optional policy, that's 4190 for Targeted School Violence Prevention Program. And Martha, I believe you had some thoughts on that in regards to policies that we already have in place that cover much of what's discussed here?
Sure. So this is interesting. It comes from press as an optional policy consideration. And I reached out to our law firm and also reached out just to other area school districts in terms of the different approaches on this particular policy. And many districts like ours are just in a first-reading mode on this, so I think we're one of the early districts to take a look at this. What's interesting is there seems to be a lot of essentially overlap with our policy we already have in place for colon 170 on student safety. This one in particular is 4:190 that proposed optional policy looks at prevention of targeted school violence specifically and some specific work around threat assessments. So I just wanted to remind people that we have a very detailed crisis plan in place. Our schools have crisis teams. The district has a crisis team that really is more fluid based on the nature of any potential crisis. We have social workers and psychologists that really work very regularly with students that may be demonstrating social-emotional concerns. We also have Ladsy Wrap Services that have been very, very helpful to our students in that area. We have an annual safety meeting with our local police fire from all three of the villages. And we have ours, you know, our intergovernmental agreements with local law enforcement as well. And again, as I even think about our facilities work in progress, looking at how do we improve our school entrances as well. So I feel like there's many, many good practices in place, and I think the Policy 4:170 speaks broadly about all of those. And again, it would be the recommendation of our law firm to probably not adopt this one at this time.
Does anyone have any questions?
Great work, Dan. It's not a question, just a...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're well ahead of your time. Are you sure you don't want to talk somewhere?
Well, I was going to say, I've got about 20 minutes left to fill. But otherwise, without objection, I will yield my time back.
All right, thanks, Dan. Next up is education. Jerry?
Okay, we have two pieces here, which I think myself having a junior high and a kindergartner are actually probably very relevant to my children's everyday lives and probably most of the children in our district. We're going to talk about culture of connectedness at the junior high level and instructional technology. So I want to hear from Ms. May and Ms. Mullen.
So thank you very much for that introduction. I'm Kristi Mullen. I'm the Assistant Principal over at Hauser. We have April May, Matt Muto, and Mr. Singh as well. Obviously, April May is our principal at Hauser. Mr. Muto is an eighth-grade social studies teacher. And Mr. Singh is our art teacher. And so as Todd was talking earlier, right around the corner, it's April, we're starting to think about all the statewide testing kids across the state are doing that, whether it's IAR or the Illinois Science Assessment. It's that time of year for us to really demonstrate the things that we're doing in our classrooms. But when we get those sixth graders coming into our school and we're releasing them to the high school, whichever one they choose to go to after eighth grade, we're really thinking about building a bridge. And so while those tests are important, all of the data points that we get from that learning is important, and this is the time of the year where we get to kind of demonstrate what we know, there's a whole nother piece of the supports for that bridge that we have at Hauser in middle school to get our kids from where they come to us to where they're going. And that's what we're going to talk about tonight a little bit, that culture of connectedness that we have at Hauser and the things that we're doing to build that bridge so that the kids can be successful in their learning, but in thinking of the whole child. So we're going to start off, we're kind of excited because we know you hear a lot about the data points. Some of this stuff is not as easy to measure, and so we'd like to have the opportunity to talk about some of that tonight. We have a new program that we've been working with the last couple of years called Facing History as Ourselves, and Mr. Muto is going to talk a little bit more about that for us.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk to you guys a little bit about it. As Ms. Mullen said, I teach eighth-grade social studies at Hauser. A little over three years ago, the social studies team was really taking a look at our curriculum, looking for ways to improve, thinking about creating theme-based units and connecting it to new standards. And we stumbled upon an organization Facing History and Ourselves. The organization has been around for over four decades, and I jumped right on board. I was like, "I want to try this out." We had a rep come in from Facing History, and I thought it sounded like it had potential to be really, to really change the way I teach and change the way our students process history and look at themselves through that lens. So I piloted one of their curriculum units, the Choices in Little Rock, three years ago, and I was blown away with how it was received by the students. And from there, we've looked to try to expand it over the last few years to other social studies classrooms, ELA classrooms, and we're really looking to kind of try to see how we can expand some of the principles that Facing History promotes throughout the school. Some of those principles, their core learning principles, the first one has to do with intellectual rigor, challenging students to develop a deep understanding of history and the relation to their lives today. The second component is ethical reflection, where students are challenged to ponder the moral implications of decision-making and understanding that history is a series of choices and how their choices today impact their own history. The third principle has to do with emotional engagement. There's challenging historical topics that we cover in the middle school level, and we want them to feel something as they're learning about all these topics. It requires them to be emotionally attuned to the past and the connection to their present lives. And then the last principle has to do with civic agency, where students are really trying to learn how to appreciate their own efforts, their own place in their community, whether it be the school community or Riverside community, and how their actions can really change those communities. So all these Facing History units begin with a real deep dive into identity, where the students actually look at themselves and they think, like, "Who am I as a person? What is my identity?" And then it kind of moves into membership, where they kind of try to figure out, okay, what does it mean to be in a group and out of a group? And then pertain it to things like, some difficult histories like the Holocaust, for example. That really got us thinking a little bit about like our own community at Hauser and thinking about like, all right, what is the identity of our students at Hauser and our staff? What is the identity of Hauser, the school? What is the identity of our community? And really trying to look at those things. At the tail end of a Facing History unit, we oftentimes look at legacy. How will we remember these difficult histories, the Civil Rights Movement, or the Holocaust, or Reconstruction? And it got us thinking a little bit about our own legacy and the legacy our students leave behind at Hauser. Like, what's the legacy of our current eighth-grade class? And so with the social studies department and Mr. Singh and the art department, we decided this year we were going to plan the first legacy project at Hauser, something that our eighth graders can leave behind that will be there, hopefully for years and years to come, something that they can come back to Hauser and visit 20 years down the road and be like, "I took part in making that, and it's hanging up in the school." And hopefully it would show a little bit about what was important to them at the time. And so we started this year with this legacy project with Mr. Singh's art group that meets in the mornings a couple times a week. And we wanted it to be student-driven. We wanted them to tell us what they were interested in, like, what are the things in their community here, or even like more globally, that is important to them? And to try to represent that through basically art pieces, murals, we kind of gave them the inspiration of like a Keith Haring-type art, big, bold outlines and colors. And the students came up with these amazing drafts, which ultimately were selected. I think we have, how many total dra...
Yeah, we have about six or seven right now.
Murals. Yeah, and so the students have been, in the art club, have been working really hard on this, but we want to bring in the rest of the eighth-grade class to actually get a chance to participate in it. And so, not this Saturday, but the Saturday after April 13th, we're hoping to bring as many eighth graders in as possible to take part in actually kind of like filling in the blanks of the mural, like filling in the color portion. The range is, I can't wait for you to get a chance to see what these end up looking like, but they're going to, the things that were important to them really range from...
Environmental issues.
A lot of environmental issues were very important to the students. Some gender stuff was also very important to them. And anyways, it was just, it's amazing to see what's important to them, and it'll be interesting, I think, for them to come back in 20 years or so and actually get a chance to look at it and see, this is what was important to us when we were in eighth grade. Anyways, this is a project that we hope will live on for years to come, right? And each year, we add something to the walls of Hauser, right? And to kind of like get rid of some of the walls that are so white and kind of add to the fabric of the school. We think there's some potential there. The third piece that I wanted to talk a little bit about too with Facing History is that we were asked to become part of their Partner Schools Network, which is a great opportunity for us to get a chance to work directly with Facing History. They will come in and offer professional development, whether it be to the whole staff or to select staff, to see how we can better implement their curriculum, recognizing that like not every teacher can teach social studies, but there's a real like SCL, social-emotional component, to a lot of their lessons that can be really taught throughout just about any content level. And we want to start getting into the habit of using, in the habit of using a similar vocabulary across the board. We should be able to use the words like bystander and upstander and perpetrator, and like that can go across content levels. And so anyways, that's kind of the vision forward. We've only been utilizing it for three years now, but we're really excited about where it's going, and we're excited about this legacy project.
Do you know when you'll finish?
Well, the goal is that, well, we're going to see how far we get.
How far you get?
Yeah.
Really? That's it?
Yeah.
We're going to be there from 9 to 1 o'clock.
Okay.
Parents are going to be getting an invitation.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we see? Yeah, that'd be great. Great. Yeah, that'd be really neat.
And we'll actually, I think, get a chance to show you a little bit of it here.
Yeah, that would be really cool to see.
But it's, yeah, I mean, it's like their drafts were like this big, right? And now they're going to be hanging up above the, yeah, they're going to be huge.
Yeah. Colorful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then going along with that, in building that connectedness and making, helping students feel connected, families feel connected, is that piece of communication. So you've probably noticed over the last several years, we try to be very routine with our Hauser happenings, and we've really tried to make it a point, especially this year, to make that Hauser happenings very student-success-oriented. So getting a glimpse really into what's going on at Hauser Junior High School for families, and at the same time, that allows a family to be proud of their student, it allows the student to maybe shine at home about what they're studying at school, maybe from a picture that was included. Hopefully, as you've driven around Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield, you've seen perhaps the bright yellow signs in someone's yard or in their window that says, "Hauser Junior High School Student of the Month." So we've started that this year so that the teams can recognize students for their positivity, for their successes, and not only academic, there's always a piece of it that's there, but also just that whole child. It might be that they're really excelling in their arts, or they're really excelling in just being a kind person to other people. Goes along with our communication. Another piece of that communication we've really stressed this year is that communication of expectations of being in school, there goes my notes, sorry, in school and on time. And that's really been a focus for us this year, trying to make sure that those expectations are clear to students and explaining to them the why of it. When you're in junior high, you know, if someone tells you something, that doesn't mean anything. But if we explain the why, we need you here at school and on time so that you're in the classroom and you can learn. And that expectation of knowing that there's going to be Mr. Harvallis sitting at the front door every morning, that if I'm not in class on time, he's going to be there to greet me, he's going to have a conversation with me, get me onto class, give me a, you know, go-get-'em kind of thing. But at the same time, there's that relationship building there that's happening. And students, we're actually hearing from students, you know, they don't want to disappoint. They don't want to have that conversation. And we've seen a drastic decrease in our tardies to school, which has been wonderful for us. And then we try to think about that last piece, especially in junior high, if you can think back to your junior high or even high school years. We know that the learning was most important. It's where it's gotten all of us to where we are today. But at the same point, what made school, school, and what made us want to go to school every day was the rest of the school life. So that final piece of that whole child is making sure that students feel connected with one another. And we look at doing that not only through the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. So activities such as our student leadership team, where any student can come and have a voice as to what goes on at Hauser, our Best Buddies program, where anyone can come and participate, hang out, do some fun things with students with special needs. We've started a GSA club this year so that students who are wanting to support someone with gender identity or someone who's going through that has a place where they feel safe and supported and connected. Our sports teams, our drama productions, our music program, our art club before school, we have so many co-curriculars. They're all opportunities for students to connect with one another and maybe find someone that they didn't know before, but they find someone that they have a like interest with, and they build that relationship. And by building that relationship and feeling connected, they're going to be more engaged in the classroom, and they're going to want to be here. So with the help of Mr. Smith, thank you very much, we tried to put together just a quick little video here for you to get a look at students feeling connected to Hauser. You will get to see a little bit of the legacy project, and the students kind of explain a little bit about that. So if it's okay, we'd like to show that, and then we'll open up to questions. Okay.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I am a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
You are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
I will attack the day the Hauser way.
I'm going to attack the day the Hauser way.
Attack the day the Hauser way.
We are going to attack the day the Hauser way.
I'm a leader.
We are meant to make a difference.
We share our voice for the world to hear.
I am strong.
I'm a leader.
I lead this my heart.
I am a leader.
We are performers. We inspire and own our learning.
I'm my own person.
I'm Matt Muto, eighth-grade social studies teacher here at Hauser, helping to lead the generation of Facing History and ourselves here at District 96. One of the things that I love about Facing History are the four learning principles they provide. We are pushing for intellectual rigor with our units, hoping that students are challenged to develop a deep understanding of history, its relationship to their lives. We also look for ethical reflection, where students can ponder the moral implications of decision-making. There's an emotional engagement piece too, which requires our students to emotionally be attuned to the past and their present lives. And then the last piece has to do with civic agency, where we hope that students learn to appreciate how their own efforts can contribute to building a civil society locally and nationally.
And I think the lesson, one of the lessons that I've learned, which carries over to today, that bullying and taking your energy out on someone, while you may not be actively involved, and you stand around and let someone else do it. And I think the lesson that we learned out of Central is that if you see something's wrong, speak up, and don't be afraid to take a position.
I'm a leader.
We are leaders, ready to make a difference.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I'm going to attack the day the Hauser way.
We created a health program to build relationships with community organizations, which helps promote positive social and emotional behavior for our students at Hauser.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I am very funny.
I am a hard worker.
I'm a leader.
We took the polar plums to the Thor Special Olympics.
I am artistic.
We are curious.
We are leaders.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I am the Lator Tab Coordinator, responsible for making sure that sixth graders build relationships, teamwork, and have a successful transition to Hauser Junior High.
I coordinate the eighth-grade field trip Cougar Advanced, Rattler Woods, Indiana, where students will have an opportunity to learn about the dangers of drugs and alcohol, practice taking healthy risks, and learn how to support each other.
We are friends.
I coordinate activities with the staff during autism awareness.
I am a power writer.
We love to go.
We are attacking the day the Hauser way.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
We are writers, ready to share our work.
I am a Special Olympics coach here at Hauser, and my overall goal is to coach kids in athletics while they're included and accepted here.
I am a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
We are considerate.
We're going to attack the day the Hauser way.
We are our student leadership team, and we provide leadership opportunities for students.
Ways to boost morale for spring day at Hauser events.
So they can display the Hauser way outside of school doors.
We are ready to attack the day the Hauser way.
We organize Valley Park here at Hauser Junior High.
And we raise money for breast cancer research.
We are activists.
I work with students to help them improve critical thinking and collaborative skills so they can integrate into better creative experiences and self-confidence.
We are confident.
I'm a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
I'm a leader.
I promote mindfulness and wellness in our Hauser yoga class.
We are designers.
We are explorers.
We're awesome, and it's a follow-up on our leaders, and it's encouraged creative and critical thinking.
Okay, well, I'm thinking, so we have this large painting for this, a little word, slash dot, and he's trying to do, and then one of, and I'm looking at this curse, and so this is, which was basically about equality. Well, I was looking at a bunch of people and she drawings, and I realized that most of the people are of this side. Now, this is inspired by Keith Haring, but it's not one of his drawings, so I really wanted to stand out from his pieces. So I have a generalist person and a medical person, and there's a drawing of this. Well, I'm really excited for this to be put up on the walls of Hauser. I think that it'll be really cool, especially when my little sister comes to Hauser and she sees that all of my art creations is on the wall. And I think it will be really cool to say, "Hey, you see that painting over there? I drew that, and I..." I drew that and I cannot create it. So I have these little pieces and that show people. Look at the piece that came around. It's supposed to run around the block. So we researched, yeah, that his style, which is old and like how it was drawn. So then we researched social relationships and pick one that we need that looks like a brush and a sketch. So we use boards and house paint here. I'm really excited to have this. We'll be able to come back here to just tell the talk.
We are our leadership.
We are ready to attack the day the Hauser way.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
We are designers and we're going to attack the day the Hauser way.
I also support students every day at Hauser. I'm a Hauser Cougar.
I'm the advisor for Hauser's GSA, Gender and Sexuality Alliance, to provide support for our LGBTQ community.
I'm an engineer. I'm going to attack the day the Hauser way.
I guide students on learning their human rights and understanding how they're being supported and violated and taught today.
I understand that all humans are entitled to search rights.
I am aware of how words support human rights.
I'm a creative animator.
I'm a Hauser Junior High School Cougar.
We engage students in physical education and athletics to promote being active and healthy themselves.
I'm a power reader and I've read over a million books.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
I'm a musician.
We have great expectations for our peers.
We love organizing the tournament at Hauser to celebrate our unity and diversity of our students.
We are powerful, creative, and groups.
We love reading and strive to ignite that passion in our students. We provide opportunities for students to explore their creativity through writing and share it with the Hauser community.
We are Hauser indoor leaders.
We are talented.
Attack the day the Hauser way.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
I'm a reader.
I'm an artist.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
We are cruel.
I am an orchestra teacher and I help students express themselves.
I am a Hauser Junior High Cougar.
We are extroverted.
I am a creator of dreams. I am a creator of community. And mostly, I am a creator of plays that kids get to work with their parents and with their teachers and with the rest of the community to make something truly special.
I'm a baseball player.
I'm a system.
I'm an Olympian.
We are swimmers.
I'm a creator. We are engineers.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
I am always trying to make fun. I am a robotics coach and meet your students opportunities to use what they learn in an math and science class to work with coding, to work with building, problem-solving, working in groups, which was great field life experience.
We are student athletes.
I am optimistic.
I'm an independent.
We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
I am ready to help Hauser parents and students start their day the right way.
We are Hauser Junior High School Cougars.
I encourage student voice and creativity through Popcorn TV. I also foster student blood and learning and critical thinking.
We are attacking the day the Hauser way.
I am Hauser music.
I am not. I am Hauser music. Oh, you're not? I am Hauser music.
I'll be here long.
Sure. We are Hauser music.
We work together with Cougar Connections, encouraging perseverance, effort, leadership, listening skills, and teamwork.
I'm a musician.
We love our instruments and making music.
I'm a music and choir teacher to have students think strongly, feel strongly, and express themselves creatively.
I am creative.
We are Hauser leaders.
I am going to make a difference in the future.
I am a Hauser Junior High School Cougar.
I am a Hauser Junior High School Cougar.
I have great expectations for myself and my peers.
I will work hard and remain strong as I achieve my goals.
My destiny is in my hands. I will believe in myself and will overcome all obstacles that wish sand in my way.
I will display outstanding character with a positive attitude. Mistakes are behind me, successes and celebrations are before me.
I accept the challenge.
I will attack the day the Hauser way. We are Hauser Junior High Cougars.
Thanks very much, guys. That was a really good presentation and really, we have a really remarkable staff. They're very talented, dedicated, and our students as well. So really nice to see the presentation and hear you guys. And also, I'm really looking forward to seeing the Legacy Project and what you guys come up with.
Welcome anytime.
Thank you. All right.
So I have with me, Sir Jason Smith, Stephanie, and Tom. And we're all going to share this presentation with a little update around instructional technology.
All right, hello, everyone. We just wanted to start kind of our conversation tonight with just kind of an interesting fact that I never really thought about until someone who I greatly respect and value their opinion on told me the other day that, you know, all students in District 96 were born in the 21st century. And all teachers teaching in District 96 were born in the 20th century. And it's a great responsibility as a team that we can meet both of those learners. And learners as in teachers and their use of technology or innovative learning strategies. And then also our students. So it's a, it's a big responsibility for us to look at how are we impacting the learning that's going on? How can we utilize technology as a tool? But then also prepare and equip our teachers to be confident and comfortable to meet their students where they're at. But also as a team to meet those teachers where they're at as well, to encourage them, to coach them, to collaborate with them, to use the tools that we are, have been provided with to, you know, provide the best education possible for students to create, to collaborate, to think critically. And then also encourage this kind of Netflix generation to, that they can use those tools to express their learning and their understanding and how they can grow. So just something that we've been kind of talking a lot recently about, which leads to something else that we, we discuss is how learning comes first and technology second. And so we do value technology as that tool. We do view it that it can accelerate learning. But always the learning goal is the first thing that we put our interest in and, and our, you know, our value in. And something that we read recently and Kelly and I have been talking about is the conversation has shifted from whether technology should be used in learning to how it can improve learning to ensure that all students have access to the high-quality educational experiences. So how can we continue to provide high-quality educational experiences for our students while incorporating and integrating technology in that learning process?
So just another quote as we kind of get started with our update is that when ed tech is used in ways that support good teaching practices, both in digital and face-to-face environments, effective learning happens. When ed tech is used in ways that propagate ineffective instructional strategies, learning is hindered. So again, as we work with teachers, really focusing on that creation aspect for students and letting students really be the ones to shine and not just consuming information.
And you've heard us talk in the past as well about looking for new opportunities for our students to utilize technology. And one of the things I, we liked about in this quote was that the, technology allows them to learn a new skill, like coding games or websites, creating music, writing and publishing stories or poetry, or simply anything else that requires them to use the creative side of their brains. So as we talked today about where we're at with instructional technology, we hope that the, our emphasis is on the creation side, that we continuously are pushing our technology as a tool for creating, not consumption. You've heard me probably say a few times that learning is creation to me, not consumption. So how can we not be passive in our technology use? But how can we use it to enhance the learning process but allowing students to have a voice in their learning, to showcase what they're learning and what they know?
So as we talk tonight, we'd like to continue to remain focused on the learning and pedagogy and not just on the devices because really the learning is what our main focus is.
So these are our main topics that we're going to talk about is just our continuing, a plan that we've developed for integration, the hardware to support our instruction, and then our annual software subscriptions.
So technology must be leveraged and used as an accelerant for student learning, again, going back to that learning, which is why Jason and I have worked on developing an instructional technology plan for teachers K through eight.
And with that technology plan, we've aligned it to the ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education Standards. And we've gone from kindergarten through eighth grade. This was something that teachers have been asking for, something that they can look at and say, oh, at this grade, students were exposed or it was reinforced that they have learned how to make a student portfolio or they've learned how to create a video, something along those lines. So Kelly and I worked together to kind of create this plan. And then with it, we wanted to figure out how can we kind of put a guideline of where it's, where students' expertise or understanding lies? So we went with optional for grade levels, so just purely an optional starting point, where we're going to then expose students, where we're going to reinforce it. And instead of going to like mastery, which you sometimes see, we just wanted to do independent, the ability to teach others. So in the process, still continue to promote student voice that then they can be experts in the classroom as well, that they can help out their classmates so that they're independently working on that tool. You'll notice in this list that a lot of the tools that we have incorporated are just ones that we are using. There's nothing new, nothing extravagant. It's just something that we have put in the hands of our teachers and the hands of our students, whether it's the Google Apps for Education, multimedia production with WeVideo or Soundtrap, which is an audio recording online program, computer and keyboarding skills, digital citizenship, digital portfolios, and then digital literacy, which we've begun to kind of unfold and which is part of the standards for ELA as well.
So this is just kind of a quick snapshot of what the scope and sequence looks like. So you'll see if it's optional, it's kind of red on the side. And then like Jason said, if students are exposed to it, if it should be reinforced in the grade level or if students should be able to do that skill independently. Again, this also helps create consistency across the building so that when students get to Hauser, sixth-grade teachers have kind of a basic understanding of what all kids should know coming to them. And then again, creating consistencies among our four elementary schools as well. And this document was first introduced to a group of teachers that Jason and I are working with this year. We call them our innovative teacher leaders. And then we, this is a live document. Like anything in teaching, it can always change or evolve. We're planning on showing it to all staff in the spring and kind of letting them take a look at it, see where they're comfortable, see where they still need support, and then give them kind of a needs assessment. And then Jason and I will work with them for the things that they still need support with in next school year, for that 1920 school year. So we want to expose them to it before the start of the school year so they have some time to digest and process so we can come up with that plan by next school year for them.
Yeah, so we're just really excited to kind of meet the needs of the teachers. They've been, as I said earlier, asking for this. But then also Kelly and I could specifically coach support, as we said earlier, our teachers as they continue to embed instructional technology tools and strategies into their instruction for student learning. The other part that we started looking at is, which Don will talk about in a little bit as our iPads are up for cycle. So we went and took a review process of our iPad use as a tool. Just a reminder, our iPads are used at kindergarten, first, and second grade. And in that review process, we really sat down and had conversations with our kindergarten teachers. We started talking to them about how are they utilizing the iPads? What creative components are they using? How much of the day are they using it? And we've talked about this last year, if you remember, with screen time and so forth. And a lot of the use for our kindergarten is with Seesaw or different ways that they can collaborate from school and have their parents see the work at home. So whether it's creating a video or drawing something and voicing it over. And in that process, the teachers were requesting that we stay one-to-one at that kindergarten level. And as we had that conversation at Tech Steering and inside that meeting and outside the meeting, we've decided when we go to purchase new iPads that we're going to go to two-to-one at the kindergarten level. And so that'll be a reduction in that purchase. And then we're going to continue going, staying one-to-one first and second grade. So we're going to have that shift. It's, it's going to be a little bit different for our kindergarten teachers because there'll be a multi-user sign-in on the iPad. So two students can log in and use their, their sign-in purposes for Seesaw and other, you know, projects that they're working on. It's something with the technology plan that we have that Kelly and I will be able to target kindergarten teachers, continue to work with them, you know, support them. It's, it's not something that they, obviously, were seeking, but it's something that we feel like we can support with them so we can continue using that tool effectively for the, the learning process. Sure?
Teachers are worried that they wouldn't be able to sign in effectively without teacher assistance. How do you, how do you propose to help them if there's a multi-user, if there's two students?
Yeah, so with the multi-user, they would just basically learn to pick.
Wait, are they going to have an iPad dedicated to two students?
Yep.
That's what I want to know, yeah.
Yeah, and I, we, I kind of have it down and out of order a little bit. But then there's this Apple Classroom, which will also help with that component as well.
Because I could see that being a logistical nightmare.
Yeah, we talked about it. So if you and I shared it, you would log in and then...
Yeah, it makes sense if it's just two.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we'll actually, probably in some instances, it'll be four students because we'll have A and P. So you will have four profiles on the...
Yeah, I mean, as long as a teacher can manage it because they're not always reading and signing in properly yet.
Yep, yep. So this, yeah.
I did have a question. I understand when we got a few recommendations during that school one, but when I was reading the teacher feedback, and I may be ahead of your presentation here, but when I was reading the teacher feedback, none of them said that instead of going to two-to-one would negatively impact their classroom. So I guess why are we, I guess, going that route if the teachers seem to be against it?
Well, when we, when it was discussed at Tech Steering, there was concern because of the limited amount of time in utilization during that.
Right, no, I understand that.
I mean, the feedback, the feedback that we presented was that it was going to be an adjustment for them. And, and really was looking at, they're using them for about 30 minutes a day. And did that 30 minutes really justify the, having the, you know, having double the...
I know, because I was the one who... I understand that. But I mean, I guess, I guess... Right. But I guess my thing is if the teachers are so much against it, it shouldn't just be, it shouldn't be my, my hesitation to go in 30. I don't see the value in 30 minutes instructional time on an iPad a day. I'm just saying if the teachers want this, I mean, I would say that we should be advancing this.[1698.64] this. I mean, I don't see the understanding, I don't teach the class, I don't understand, but I'm just saying, if this is something that the teachers want, and they see the need for it, I guess is what I'm trying to say is, that's all, that's what I'm trying to say. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be my hesitation for it.
We can undo the, share the feedback, so...
I agree, I appreciate that, because the recommendation from our kindergarten teachers was to stay one-to-one. And when we talked at Tech Steering, we kind of discussed, discussed with them, or we had two kindergarten teachers at the meeting, and they discussed how they utilize the iPad. And with, to go back to that plan, what Kelly and I were very excited about is how we can now continue to work with them, so that those 30 minutes or 45 minutes within that class period are being really maximized for that creation side. And that does go along with the Apple Classroom, where a teacher can now control the classroom. So I can open up all of your iPads at once to the same app, or I can lock your iPad if we need to have a conversation, which I think will have, that will impact it, because as Sherry was saying earlier, when you have the little kiddos, like, how do I get to hear, like, we can now maximize those 30 minutes. So it will be, if we go two-to-one, we'll be in a shift, there will be an adjustment when half of you will be on Seesaw, and then I have to, like, almost go in centers.
Coming home, it tends to be a reiteration of the worksheets that come home, where they're reading their sight words to themselves, so...
Yeah, so there's a variety of different ways that you can use Seesaw.
Yeah, I could see them being able to work through that, just from my parent's side.
Right.
It seems to be very similar to what you get in the folder.
Yeah, so then also, like, you can, on Seesaw, there's a drawing component.
Yeah.
So let's say they were studying trees, instead of filling in a worksheet of their parts, they could draw the tree and then label it themselves.
Yeah.
They can record a video, they can use manipulatives in their math or their dry erase board, and they could review, record that and...
Right, I've seen those too, yeah, with patterns and...
Yep, and then, that's a great point, that is allowing us to then connect to the home as well, we said.
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying, it doesn't seem surmountable as a parent, because it seems to reiterate, it's more of a reinforcement of what they're already doing in the worksheet.
I think the concern on the teachers' part was more the...
Is it just time management, sign-in, is that the issue?
Correct, it was more the functionality and being able to address all the kids at one time.
Yeah, if you can probably work out that, that's probably most of their, from what they wrote, it seems like it, unless it's the whole groups Seesaw they're worried about, that no one could do it exactly at the same time.
That was, that was it, teaching the kids the functionality as one larger versus breaking the kids down into two groups to teach the functionality piece, that was really where their major concern.
Okay.
Or certain projects, like, certain projects that they do do as a whole class, and then not having the devices to do whole-class projects.
Yeah, so also with the...
So we were trying to maintain that lens of fiscal responsibility, you know, and we can support the kindergarten teachers to use the devices in a similar way, ideally, would they like to stay one-to-one? Yes, and we...
It's just, I was just sort of surprised to see those, those in this, because I guess my thought is that if there's a, if we can do it, go to one and make it, provide still the quality that we're looking to provide in education, then let's do it, but if it's, if it's not, or if it's going to, I just was sort of reading this, got the hindrance, I was sort of getting two different messages here, like, we're going to two-to-one, but the teachers aren't happy, so, but if the teachers can do this, and we can accommodate them to provide the education, then I say, yeah, let's, let's...
Yeah, so we thought we would try it.
Okay.
And I think when we present kind of the financial side of it, we also see that there's really not a very large difference in cost between maintaining one-to-one and going to a two-to-one, because we need, we need a device that has内存 memory on it, so we can support the multiple users, so...
Do you, and I should have asked this question ahead of time, so you have a chance to prepare, but where is, where are the skeptics and the proponents at with regards to when we start introducing a lot of technology, and is half an hour considered ideal, is...
So it's not a solid half an hour for any child at any one time, it gets used at various points throughout the kindergarten day, so it's like 30 minutes total of the day. When we shared that research last year from the American Pediatrics, we're within the range of the two and a half hours per week, two to three hours per week for that age group, and because they're not on it for a sustained 30 minutes, we're actually probably functionally a little bit even at the lower end of that metric, yeah.
I would say as a kindergarten parent, they're not...
I mean, you have a kindergartner in there, yeah. So, and because we have a half-day program, we have to be conscious, as these two said in the very beginning of the presentation, focused on the learning and the technology as a tool. So it's not a babysitter, and most of the activities that they're engaging with are usually creation activities, like sharing work back home.
I think the ones that are most interesting, just being a K parent, is seeing their math manipulatives and hearing them do, hearing them say the pattern. Some of it is a little redundant for me, if it's doing the sight words that they're already doing, like, four times during the day or at home, but...
But showing how they're solving problems.
It doesn't seem like a huge financial incentive, though, I, that's why we're, I think that's why we're questioning what's happening, but...
We'll get to that slide in a second. The other two parts that we were looking at is streamlining and vetting our app lists, so looking at passive apps versus just active apps. So what are we putting on our iPads that are enhancing our instruction and enhancing our learning, not that just kind of passive and just kind of consuming. So our goal, and we've been working with kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers, is to kind of limit to 20 apps, so it's just more a consistent list across the grade level, and we can just kind of target that, those learning applications. The other thing that we started talking about with second grade is looking at keyboard options. So the second grade teachers feel their students are ready to type, and that's part of our technology plan, they're ready to produce. Apple has a program called Everyone Can Create, so you can send out a book, a template, and students can start creating books, they can start creating more of presentation tools that are preparing them for third grade and on. So we're going to look at exploring keyboard options as well, not Bluetooth, but more of just a plug-in one, where we'd have like a set that teachers could potentially take out to start using.
And the other piece of that for keyboarding is, in third grade, they have to keyboard for the state assessment, so, and we're not, if we don't expose them sooner than third grade, then we're really trying to do double duty at the beginning of third grade, get everybody's keyboarding skills up in preparation for an April assessment, it would be nice to introduce it a little bit sooner.
I think the exciting part was that second grade felt like, because ReadyGen is so much more rigorous than some of the writing that they were doing in the past, that the students are producing much longer pieces of work, and so they really need that keyboard, because the typing keyboard alone is not functional on the iPad. So it's also been like kind of an exciting thing to see in the learning, that that writing is getting longer, and the kids are able to sustain longer writing pieces.
And I totally understand that, I would still hope that they would have functional paper writing because of retention and the way your brain works.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's like for that final draft piece. It's a total balance, and I understand that.
And it's the final draft piece.
Yes, and especially when they're obtaining new content and things like that, yeah.
Yeah, so their drafts are still paper pencils, their final drafts.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, okay, so we can look at some of the things impacting the budget for the coming year. So we talked about the iPad cycle, we have, we have actually about 175 devices that we need, we need to be replaced. Going two-to-one, we only need to purchase 135, but it is a more expensive device, because it has, needs additional storage for the additional user profiles. Our original recommendation at the Tech Steering Committee was to maintain one-to-one, we didn't see the, you know, the difference in cost, it was fairly negligible, but we did open it up to, you know, we had the kindergarten staff provide feedback, we also got feedback from all the steering committee members, and we didn't feel coming in here that we had full support after that, but that was the initial recommendation to do that.
Do you have an idea, Merrill, or maybe Martha, about future kindergarten numbers for next year, and, because we have fairly small classes?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have like 127 right now currently registered.
Would that, would that impact your decision based on enrollment, if we had, I mean, would you still be able to function, are you saying four users per device?
Oh, I see what you're saying, if the class size were to be...
If the class size were to change.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have, have to look at what those numbers...
Yeah, would you be able to function?
Yeah. We probably would, you know, like at a Hollywood, where we had 26 this year, we would purchase 13 for Hollywood, you know, versus 10 for a class of 20, so looking at that enrollment and projecting, and, you know, not padding it at an exorbitant rate, but padding it with a normal attrition rate that we get.
Yeah, and as with, like, for instance, with our one-to-one program, it does fluctuate from year to year based on, based on enrollments. The other thing that we looked at, as your members recall, last year, we were looking at our projection systems, versus going interactive, going, looking at the interactives that we have currently versus going not interactive. Again, we went back, we talked to staff, we were in depth of how they were using it, and really, one of the main features that they were really looking forward to with the projector replacement was just having this untethered connectivity, that that was really the larger need that they saw within that. So recommendation is going to be to go to non-interactive projectors. We also have some other control systems that, that control not only the projector, but document cameras and audio systems that need to be replaced, and then we have the addition of the 100 wireless adapters for the projectors.
Does, I don't want to insult, does everyone understand like why don tetheredness, so like right now, a teacher has to keep their computer up at the front of the room, plugged in, and then if they move throughout the room, they have to come back and press the right arrow if they're in Bluetooth slides, so this would allow them to just be free to move all their...
So in terms of the financial side of it, it is a significant savings by going to the non-interactives, and we don't feel that it would have a huge impact on instruction. We still do have some, because we've been replacing these as we've had failures, we still have a minimal quantity of interactives, that if we needed it in a particular environment, we could also move those to those, those areas as needed.
Currently, what percentage of the...
Very few places for math manipulatives, but with, with the devices and the iPads, they can manipulate there and project now, so we actually don't need the projectors to be as interactive to access the way we're utilizing them now, and then in some of the science classes, and that's where we might move up a few of the interactives that we still...
And these interactives are more of like a pen technology, so you have to calibrate them quite a bit, and then, it's not multi-touch user, so it's really just one pen at a time. So if you open up the software that's provided, you can draw, but it's not like the multi-touch...
I can't see that many people using that.
Correct, and the Apple TV too will allow like us to project from devices versus using an interactive projector, which will be much more efficient and effective.
And then the older grades, the students can use like their interactive math manipulatives, like on their, even their Chromebooks, like even in third grade, they're making like screencast videos of what they're doing with their math manipulatives on their Chromebook, so with the interactivity of the student device, they don't really need the projector.
And Epson, for their wireless capabilities, has a software that, if we were using it right now, we could put up the four screens at once on the screen, so if four of us wanted to show our work at one time, it could be two, it could be one, but the teacher has control of the cast, someone's, so if I want to see what riches, I could just cast his screen, and then we can have that conversation and showcase that.
We had these talks years ago, actually, about, with Don Tofano, about connecting classrooms as well, with, not just within the classroom, but connecting classrooms to each other and classes partnering together with their work.
Yeah, now, you know, with the...
I mean, because of the cloud and, you know, the way it's functioning.
Exactly, I mean, with, whether it's through Google Hangouts or through other types of, you know, online meeting platforms, it does open it up to a lot of options. Some other items that are just, some stuff that's up for cycle, we have some colored laser printers that are due to be cycled out, so replacement of those. I looked up about when they were purchased, they're about anywhere between nine and 11 years old currently, so we've got some good use of that. We also want to look at implementing a copy management solution, it would allow more of a PIN-based or FOB-based printing, where items would necessarily automatically print to a copier, if it was sent to it, teachers would go up, users would go up and print it out. What organizations find is typically it's about 20 to 30% reduction, because some of the stuff actually doesn't get printed, so it just saves a lot of waste in that as well.
This is a lastly, we were asked last year a little bit about our subscription softwares and our usages, these are our three major learning software subscriptions, Learning A to Z, which has multiple reading platforms that are students' access. They all report their data in a little bit of a different way, so Learning A to Z really reports it in the number of downloads, and you can see the number of students and the average downloads that are being accessed through Learning A to Z. News ELA, they report it more so in terms of things assigned, as well as some downloads. We do more assignments through that one, that's a resource where the kids can access informational text related to the themes or subjects they're studying, so it gives us some supplemental opportunities to connect literature to informational text.
Ten Marks going away.
Ten Marks is sunsetting, but I wanted to show the usage, because we are looking for a replacement, and it's heavily utilized, as you can see, almost 80,000 assignments.
I will say at the turn, though, it's a little bit of busy work at home, it's a little bit of redundant, busy work.
And that could be at home, in the classrooms, used to differentiate during assignment time, so...
It's one of those things where you're like, okay, get my Ten Marks on.
Yeah. Well, we piloted one, and it didn't turn out to have the rigor that we were hoping for, and so we are being very discretionary, because we want it to serve the same purpose and not just be there, like we talked about earlier, as a consuming, you know, station where we're not going to be able to use it adaptively to meet kids' needs, and so the one product that we did see that's closer is way more expensive, almost double the cost per student, so I'm not sure that we would utilize it enough to validate, you know, that that would validate that level of cost. So we're still exploring, we have a few more, Kelly and I are really working on this together, we've got three more that people have sent our way that we're going to be checking out over the next few months, and so we may redo a proof of concept in the fall. So we keep, we're keeping at it. At the moment, what we do have the option of at the middle school is Khan Academy with parent permission, but you have to have parent permission for that one. So we are still investigating, we're hoping we're going to find a solution. We have a, I have a work group of all the districts that are using Ten Marks, and we're all sharing things we're exploring, so we can be efficient and save time with each other, and posting what we're finding out about each one as we're vetting them, so we're working through that listserv and getting recommendations with one another as well to be more efficient across district.
But it's really challenging to find one that has the level of questioning that's as what's on Ten Marks. A lot of it is like fact-based in newer programs, where Ten Marks is much more like application-based, the questioning is similar to what they'll see on IER this spring, and we just haven't found that matching yet.
There's a lot of people who are really disappointed, and many of them are just now going back to programs more for fact fluency practice rather than application practice, because they're not finding...
I would say, though, it still feels as apparent like it's a supplemental use, though...
You might be just seeing one element of it, because there's...
No, I'm saying since elementary, I would say that it's not their, it's not their bread and butter. I think we'll be fine until we find something.
Right, and what you're seeing at home are not the components necessarily that are being used to.
No, 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 and I also communicate about what happens at the middle school, but I think we'll be fine until they find something, but...
So we'll, we'll continue.
I don't want to buy something just because it's no good.
Correct, and we're not going to do that.
Yeah.
We won't do that.
Right.
We don't want to purchase something just because we have something now, we want it to match sort of the needs.
No, I'm glad you're being careful about it.
And the teachers are really cognizant, too, like, they're not doing the proof of concept right now, I mean, the feedback from them has just been like, no, this is not at the rigor that we need for our students, so I'm glad we've taught them to be discretionary.
This slide, just looking at our current budget projections, looking from fiscal year 19, so what our current year budget, to what it's projected for next year, we are projected to go down about 1%, just based on the, kind of the ups and downs of the tech budget. Right now, we're at about 7.5% below that target for next year, with some of the reductions that you saw there, but also just in going area to area and just trying to reduce where we can to get a closer number, number on it.
All right, so looking at the future, as we mentioned earlier, teaching our 21st century skills in our students, going to continue to look at virtual reality and augmented reality kits to use at kindergarten through eighth grade. So this is the second year we've kind of presented it to Tech Steering, and we've decided to continue to look at these different opportunities where students can be immersed and exposed to places and locations that they never would have been, you know, given the opportunity without technology. So there's different programs like Google Expeditions, where if you are reading about the Amazon Rainforest, you could put on a headset and then be immersed in that Amazon Rainforest and see. The nice thing about it is it's almost like a virtual field trip that teachers can lead their students on and move them through, and they also allow opportunities for students to create different field trips as well. So we've started to reach out and find area schools that are utilizing virtual reality and augmented reality, and the research is new, so it's not a ton of responses, but we're finding so far, there's been nine local school districts around us that are implementing it, three that are kind of in the same boat as us, investigating for that future implementation, and three that just, they're not, you know, at that point where they're looking into it.
So this is some of the feedback that we got from the area schools that when they, that are currently implementing it, and just kind of how they're using it in the classroom, how they're feeling that it's impacting student achievement. So building background knowledge, they're planning on hosting like a summer workshop for their teachers to get them more familiar with it, thinking about SAMR, which is that implementation of educational technology, making topics and experiences more relevant, because students can see what they're reading about or studying, not just reading about it or seeing it in ways that they're used to, and then experiencing things that obviously a lot of our students wouldn't be able to experience otherwise. So really positive feedback from the area districts that are currently using VR or AR in their curriculum.
And with the exploration, it's nice to know of contacts, that we can talk to them as we continue to explore, to see how it's going for them. The next part that we're looking to explore for, in the future, is, we're at year three right now for our Hauser Junior High STEAM class with Mr. Stephen Jones, and he approached us about wanting to incorporate an artificial intelligence curriculum into his STEAM class. He just went through some coursework and has been some sort of certification regarding AI and the impact it can have for teaching our students more about it. I'm not going to pretend that I'm an expert in that, so I asked him to write up something, and how he envisions that to impact his class. It's something that wouldn't really bring about any budget, there's nothing, year one that would bring anything, it's just exposing to students to what is artificial intelligence, how is it impacting lives, and kind of starting that conversation piece.
Might be difficult for middle school students to...
Yeah, so we talked about, so with a trimester, we talked about like just a small challenge, just to start exposing...
I think that's a fantastic idea, I really think that, because that goes back to what you were talking about earlier, which is the active creation side of things, as opposed to, it sounded like the... is the active creation side of things as opposed to, it sounded like the other thing you're talking about, the, we just talked about just before this, the virtual reality might be a little more passive. This, I think is, because you're right, it is really every, we don't see it, but it is everywhere around us.
That's the perfect point, right? Is that if explaining to students when they go home and say, hey Alexa, or hey Google, like what is taking place?
Collecting data on you and they're using that data through these sophisticated algorithms.
Exactly. And also like, yeah, how is that all taking place? How is Netflix, like just exposing it to our students?
I agree. That's a great idea.
It's their world, right?
Yeah. He has that up there.
Yeah. No, no, that's something that is kind of fascinating with different species too. They're looking at vertebrates and things like that to figure out how to communicate. Yeah, it's really interesting, but it's very difficult. So I have confidence, Mr. Jones, but he's awesome.
So if you have any questions, Jones S. We're also going to start looking for the future and exploring expansion of our STEAM and STEM options at K-5. I've been working with Sarah Hickey here at Ames in second grade. She's kind of created like a little bit of a maker space in our classroom. She does some STEM challenges with students, just how they can collaborate together, solve problems, kind of, you know, iterate and make changes and prototypes. So just continue to look at how we can continue to expand on. I feel what we have is a very strong STEAM department and program here in District 96. And then something else we started looking at this year with our teacher leader group is classroom audio amplification systems. So we just got a trial, it was like a 30-day trial and basically just how can we start looking at the amplification of our, the teacher voice, but more importantly, the student voice in the classroom? So teachers all think they have a teacher voice, but really there's yelling. So how can we have that calming voice in the classroom where if I wear a microphone, it's then projected throughout the classroom, which allows if you're sitting by the unit, like the vent in the back and someone's tapping their pencil and there's a lawnmower outside, there's a lot of studies about the first, like how far you sit away from the teacher, the percentage of the words that you're missing as adults. You can tune me out and then I miss every other word and you can still understand what I'm probably saying. And there's studies with students about if they miss words, are they really grasping what's going on? And so the amplification system, when our teacher leaders tried it, the feedback that we got was positive, that they felt like it was a more calm environment. But the nice thing is not only does the teacher wear the microphone, but then the students can pass a mic. So then the student in the back can kind of share what their thoughts as well. And they said that a lot of the quiet students felt more confident to share their voice as well. Now granted, it was one day, so maybe students were just excited to use it, but it's something that we're just going to continue to look at and potentially, you know, see how we can implement it for the future.
Hopefully the teachers aren't standing in one place the whole time either, but they're walking around sometimes.
Yeah. Well, it's all, it's all wireless connect.
Yeah. No, I mean in general, like.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah. So.
No, you're supposed to move around your classroom. Yeah.
Well, the funny part was when teachers write on the wall, you know, they forget like how their voice is just going the opposite way. So students can then now hear them in the back, so.
Any questions for the tech people?
Just in general, I appreciate, while I appreciate the fact that the costs are potentially going down, the more important thing is that in the technology group that you guys are looking at all of the tech and deciding what's good and bad and actually evaluating it and not simply picking the shiny new thing and emphasizing the tool aspect as part of that. So just, I appreciate your thoughtfulness as you look at what we have and while something can be upgraded, what is the appropriate upgrade?
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, teacher, the teacher input is really important because we're not the ones in there using it. So thank you for talking to them. All right, we're going to pass it on to facilities. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
And Jason, do you have the clicker? And will the next presentation be ready to load?
Yeah.
I'm going to stay.
Got it.
All right. I'm doing the overview of the long-range facilities plan. It's me, I think. That's not the right, that's not the presentation. So on the agenda, we have the long-range facility plan, just to touch base about the modifications to the Blythe and Hollywood projects. Is that the long, yeah. It's the Google slide version of the long-range facility plan. District 96 Long Range Facilities Plan, updated April 3, 2019.
Everybody has it in front of them.
Yeah, we could certainly use what's. Don, this is one you loaded for Board Book. Nope. We can, we can go ahead with what's, I mean, it's in Board Book, so the board all has access to it. And I really, what the present, Don, why don't you go, do you have the presentation from last time? Because it's really the same presentation, just there's some areas that, no, actually it wouldn't have the new options on it.
That's pretty sick.
Yeah. Well, why don't we go with what's available in Board Book? As I said, the board has it. What I really wanted to just talk through and.
Can you see Board Book on that computer? Can you open Board Book in that computer?
Oh, can you, yeah, can you open Board Book on that computer?
Yeah.
And then it'll go to the PDF version. Thank you, Jeff. So my clicker just won't click through, right?
Um, maybe I should actually just kill it.
Okay. So I thought I would take the opportunity to share with everybody just our updates from the work with the Long Range Facilities Plan and the work of the committee and an opportunity to gather board feedback. And let's see if we can move through here. So this, tonight is really updated revised concept ideas for Blythe Park and Hollywood specifically that I want to touch base on. This presentation looks longer because we decided to leave the context there from some of the previous presentations, but I'm going to move through that relatively quickly. So I don't think people need the recap, but you know, our ongoing work, the work continues and that this was really our list of facilities needs that we had identified as a committee and the board had looked at. And then when we met last time, there was really this question if there were some additional efficiencies that we could look for in the facility design ideas. And so that's really where we led to, our goals for Blythe Park specifically were around securing a front entrance. We talked about renovating the auditorium for updated performance and multipurpose room use and then adding the additional classrooms. We've kind of modified that idea to look at renovation of the auditorium to become also a music instruction space, but not lose it in terms of performance space. So I'm going to click through. These are all options that you've seen already. But it's really option four. Let me make sure. Option four is the new, and it's important just that we look at this because it's going to be in the updated financial projections that Jim's going to talk about in just a minute. But one of the ideas, sorry, moved on to Hollywood too quickly here, was to continue to do the secured front entrance, to not, to only renovate the auditorium in such a way that we would pull out like several rows of seats to create some instructional space right at the base of the stage there. And then the other idea was to, to open up what's really a storage area, and I don't have a pointer here, do I? In the multipurpose room, Meryl, you want, thank you. There's a garage, there's a storage garage right off the multipurpose room, on the multipurpose room, right, up, up, over.
Up or yellow?
Yellow. Sorry, no, next.
Go to your right, right? Keep going.
Nope, nope, nope.
More right, there you go.
And, right. And to create some storage so that the multipurpose room would be used for lunch, also for art instruction, but having that additional storage would really help. Potentially even be able to carve out some kind of small group opportunity there, individual itinerant space. So again, this really modifies the costs and it also really modifies the, sorry, modifies the direction that we're looking at. It's much less renovation of the auditorium. It's making that the place where music class is taught.
On the slide, there's, there's no color on the auditorium, so the renovation is very minimal?
Very minimal. I mean, it's something that we would do in-house by just removing several rows of seats.
Make these little dots that represent sort of like where that was.
No, those are columns, I think.
Yeah.
But that's where the seating is in front of the stage that come back.
I think the idea was just the first few rows of.
Right.
Of the stage. Like you're looking at the stage, it'd be the first few rows.
We had talked, yeah, we had talked about teaching music on the stage. I worried about that a little bit when there's a lot of movement activities too, so the idea of placing, you know, really doing again, music class on the front of the stage and it would preserve it as an auditorium and a performance space. It would not convert it into that multipurpose room, more flexible space overall, but we really feel that it's, would still meet many of our goals here and really becomes a more cost-effective solution. The other idea is I think there's just a modification of the secured front office in terms of making that a smaller footprint there for that vestibule.
So a question back to the auditorium idea, so if those seats are removed and they're removed permanently or they're put back in place if there's a performance on the stage?
They'd be removed permanently. You know, the other thing that really is much more available in the market now are some kind of like folding chair, flexible like seating. It's probably winter holiday, talent show, Veterans Day where that auditorium is fully used. And a lot of that seating is for the children themselves, so children being able to bring in like a scoop chair, some kind of movable, really child-appropriate chair. So we don't think that we would lose real, real space that might be needed for a performance and for the audience. So it's an idea and I think it's an idea that brings about some efficiency. I mean, there's some trade-offs in all of this, but that was really one of the goals that this group looked at, that the committee looked at.
The other thing that I know Kazmir had noted is that a lot of the chairs in the auditorium are not good right now. So this actually produces an opportunity to use the chairs, you know, to remove the chairs that are need of repair anyway and replace them with the, you know.
The ones you take out?
Yeah. So you're kind of, instead of replacing those chairs, you're.
Reuse them.
Yeah.
So the goals would be that secured front entrance, what I call minor renovation in auditorium for music instruction and performance space. And then the multipurpose room is the lunchroom, art room and large group space when it's available. This would still leave us sort of two classrooms shy of a true two-section school. That's assuming we had full day kindergarten. So we're pretty close there. It would really be one section of, assuming that we're still at half-day kindergarten, really one, one more class would be needed to make it a true two-section. And I know that number's probably really hard to see there, but it does bring our costs down significantly.
Basically just because the vestibule and the reception office are smaller.
Smaller and the auditorium renovation.
Auditorium renovation.
We compared option one, there was, there was no auditorium option one either, was there?
Right, right.
And carving the small group learning out of that storage garage as well.
You get that in addition, right? I'm going to do a surprise reaction again.
Yep. And it just sort of came up in conversation.
Right.
With Bill Radke, we said, well, could we take something out of there? And he said, yeah.
So one of the things that the committee, the facilities advisory committee had asked and that the architect had offered is to do an additional walkthrough with the principals. And so that really became this, you know, how do we, in terms of the spaces we're trying to gain, how does this impact or change that? So, so this is an updated idea for Blythe and again, I think it's still, again, quite literally checks most of those boxes. Like I said, leaves us, you know, potentially one classroom shy. Again, that's all assuming the early learners can move to an addition at Ames, that that's really adding three new classrooms.
So that option.
Making three more classrooms available, I should say.
So that option four, even though obviously the cost is significantly less, if we're doing the work on the auditorium in-house, has that work just been excluded from this or is that incorporated into that estimate?
It's included.
Excluded.
Excluded, yeah. I mean, I think the thought was literally our own in-house team could remove a couple rows of seats. As Linda pointed out, the seats are not in good condition anyway. I mean, some of these seats are needing to replace, be replaced. So it's, it's hard to visualize it not being in there, but it just, it does create space for children to participate in music class right there in the auditorium.
So I know as well, particularly around Blythe Park, it had been mentioned, I think anecdotally, I don't know if we've established it concrete, but that previous attempts to do renovations on Blythe Park could run into opposition either from, you know, historical board of some sort. I'm wondering, has there been any work or any investigation done around that?
Right. Not yet. And so that's really one of the things that we're going to talk about, this revised MOU idea and to start really doing some of the research around that. We know Blythe has landmark status. That doesn't mean that the facade can't be changed, it's that the proposals have to make it through a different level of review and we would need to make sure, and that would be the intention, is that any changes would be done in keeping with the architectural style of the school.
I had the same thought, same question as you do.
The vestibule seems iffy to me for the historic.
It would seem low, like I'm just looking at what they have here. I mean, I, I'm not an architect, but I'm just guessing that, you know, the historical commission is going to have some issues with the way that kind of like, there's like that sort of jutting out effect and, you know, if they were just to make that like, like something in the previous thing where it was like.
Like just straight across.
Straight across, but small, like the vestibule, like make it small, like the vestibule. Maybe make that reception office like really small, the same size as the vestibule. At least you don't have that weird like, you know, that weird.
The footprint change.
I'm curious to see what they're going to say about this. My guess is they're.
I think, having been out there fairly recently, one of the things that is going to end up being historic is the fact that you can be in front and look through all that glass.
The glass, yeah.
And it's the openness really that is going to be a discussion between the architect and our needs and historic commission. But to Dan's point, I think there was some community concern about the use of the auditorium and some emotional attachment to the way it is right now. So that was also something we had to take into account.
Well, I would say this revised option, at least it seems like a step in that direction. So I definitely can appreciate that. But as Joel has mentioned, that there has been a lot of community feedback particularly in regards to the auditorium.
I wouldn't say it's a lot of community feedback, but it's been some.
Yeah, I've heard some.
Yeah. And I think the goal is to preserve the performance space, absolutely, you know.
It's an expensive renovation because of the floor. If you go in there.
Yeah.
There's, there's not natural light.
It's great.
The floor slopes, obviously, as an auditorium, it is used well for those events that I know, you know, noted like talent show, winter holiday, Veterans Day programming. I think what they would tell you at Blythe is it's not highly utilized at other times. So to make it music instruction makes some sense. To not renovate it makes some sense. Renovating it fully, which was in that original design idea or that second design idea, did create that multipurpose room, very flexible space opportunity, but again, that's not, not critical to the process at this point in time. And it's something that over time, if there was a great space need at Blythe, it could be done at a future time.
I think that's the key point Martha, I think, is that, and what I like about this plan is that it's sort of a step in a certain direction, but we don't have to get to the end of the journey today, right? It's like we can.
It still provides that.
Five years from now, they can.
If for some reason there's an enrollment boom and we have to go there. If, for some reason, there's an enrollment boom and we have to go there, we run that space.
Maybe the enrollment's going to decline and then we'd have to work money on it, right?
Exactly. I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I'm fully in support of both what Linda and Jeff said, and that's, we've, this change would give us time to see where things are at. It's not going to instantaneously become a two-section school if we happen to need that.
And we might not need it.
And we might never need it. So this is an improvement that certainly is probably good for at least five years, which is an appropriate thing for us to do in terms of long-range planning, is what are we doing for the next...
So just one question, though, on the principal's office. I mean, currently, the current office is on the other side of the building, just across the hallway from where it's drawn here. And in that, in that office, you have the principal's office, you have the reception, and you have a workspace, right? And you have the nurse's office. So all four, all four things are in that room there. So I guess I'm wondering, given that all four things are in there now, and I haven't heard that there's any space issues there, why do we need the separate reception office? Why can't that whole thing be a vestibule? I guess, why does the reception office have to be outside of that room, just the way it's drawn? You see what I'm saying? That's a question, I guess, I would ask. And why couldn't you just do exactly what you have now, but now you just basically have created a larger vestibule that's kind of... Right.
Mrs. Rivera, current front door.
Yes.
So to three people and do a vapor laugher, you need some kind of space.
So my question is, you see those two orange, those two orange squares, the small one and the big one?
Yeah.
Starting with the small one, just draw a line across to the right from the small one. Okay, you've got, basically, now you've got two hallways. You've got like a hallway that's next to the current hallway, that's your entryway. It's not elegant, but you're, I guess my question is more like, why do we need a separate, a separate, what do they call it? Reception area, given that we already have a reception area in the current office, which is the same size as the one that we're talking about, you know? So I don't see why it's quite necessary.
And again, I don't know if that, the design there was to also try to better match the facade and not just create a sense of like a little box off the front, but that's certainly a question we can take back.
This is going to make this same smaller space in this classroom here. I mean, because they're trying to... Is this a smaller space? And so I think they were trying to utilize without turning walls down, sort of how this configuration looks, and so the shape is a little bit different based on that smaller space that we're using.
But we know that this vestibule, this front entrance, is going to come up, right, because of the exterior at Blythe? And so, again, these are design ideas, but the design idea is to create some kind of secured vestibule, and that it seems to make sense to do it at that front space that may have some impact on the facade, but to be done in a way that's consistent with and would receive, you know, approval through Historic Commission.
There's clearly a few solutions that are not for that location there. Your point is a good one, Jeff, but I think that gets vetted in this next stage of the process.
Yeah, I agree. The stroke of the finger, the way you...
Well, especially with the glass, being able to see through is one of the most interesting pieces about the building.
That's right.
And I could see Historic Commission really looking at that.
But that would be a good question opposed to Kazimera, as like, you know, current workflow and what's necessary.
Right, right. So I'll move on to Hollywood. So again, our needs at Hollywood, we're securing the front office, accounting for existing itinerant student support area, so we know that that's a need specifically at Hollywood right now, separating planned parking and the idea of a multipurpose room for lunch and large group learning experiences. So again, going our previous options that you've already talked about, we've already talked about. We get to option three for Hollywood, right? Yep. And, making sure it's not four. What we have here is a reduction in the amount of addition added. It's adding a multipurpose room, and it's not adding that additional space for itinerant small group learning opportunities. The idea being that the classroom that's over there, just to the right of the gymnasium, I don't have a pointer here, is the current Ladsy CD classroom. And so one idea is with the other renovations and additions, again, if sort of everything, our jigsaw puzzle moves forward as we're talking about, that it's very likely that the CD classroom could move to Central School. We've talked about probably there's an advantage for the children to be in a multi-section school, and that that classroom then could be subdivided or created a collaborative itinerant learning space, whether it's that classroom or one of the others. But it really frees up a space to take care of the itinerant small group learning spaces that we need. Therefore, the addition could be just a multipurpose room. We still do the flip-flop to get to the secured front office. That part didn't change. So, again, that one also helps us look at something that's more cost-effective overall. It's hard to read what's up there. So, yeah, so originally, I think our first option one was just doing the secured front entrance.
That's correct.
And then the second one was the larger addition and the secured front entrance. This one sort of modifies and goes to just a multipurpose room, as the addition still creates the itinerant learning space by creating, by making use of that classroom that we could shift the programming in terms of what's going on in that classroom. So, questions or comments about that?
You know, I do have a question about the, sort of, just the design and layout. I know on the, if you look off the library and the office and the reading area, that's like an open area. Is there a reason that we didn't, it just, this seems very like hodgepodge, just put together. Is there a reason that we didn't put the multipurpose room and possibly create another office somehow off to the side there? Because there is space, there's no windows on that wall, it's like completely...
Talking about to the...
So you're saying like more like a U?
Right, to whatever, that way, when you're looking at the drawing, right.
To the right of the library is what David's saying.
You're saying to the right. You're saying, you're saying to the east of the library?
Right, exactly.
So not...
There's parking, it's probably about 30 feet wide.
Right, I mean, it's longer, but it's narrower, but longer.
That's what I'm, wait.
Would you like to go...
That's what we're running at.
Yeah, right there.
Is there enough space there?
I think that's something that the architect has looked at, and again, that's something that could be studied. Again, the design idea, the concept idea is to add a multipurpose, or make that...
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but part of this, the concept is really, here's the space. Where exactly the space ends up, and, you know, if you want to create more of a U shape in the parking lot?
Right, no, I understand that. I was just asking why it wasn't. I don't know, I don't know like easements and all that, but I know there's space there.
No, I think, you know, I'm not sure either, I think the idea there would be, to create it wherever there opens enough more space for a playing area outside, yeah. So I was, so on your, like, question, I was thinking, could it be more, if there's not space to, towards the stadium, is there, could it be like underneath those math and reading rooms to create more of a U?
Right, yeah.
Part of...
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if that, you know, there's an issue with there's windows in
those rooms.
That's...
Like, this spots up bathrooms and that.
Right.
Yeah, that does, I know that's how they limited it there, it makes sense, but if there is a, you know...
Or you can make a good courtyard or something like that.
All right.
If it was an interruption to those classrooms in the library, could where it is...
Orange, because they're not being funneled through the very extreme end.
Because I'm also just sort of looking at it from a practical perspective, that like, whatever courtyard you might want to say in there, it's going to be hard to monitor kids, because, I mean, I know kids will, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good...
I think there's mechanical there.
There is mechanical there, right, yeah.
That might be why.
Yeah, that's what I remember hearing, that there's mechanicals right there, and that's like...
Sign larger, absolutely.
But these are all, these are all great, you know, good feedback to...
So this is one question, this is a very clean example, because here, this is the same as option one, I think, right, in terms of flipping the office, but option one doesn't have this addition on it.
Right.
So you can look at the cost of the total difference between the cost of option one and option three, and you look at the square footage of this multipurpose room. And it looks like, you know, roughly speaking, it's going to cost $1,000 a square foot to build this simple multipurpose room. I guess my question is, where's that, $1,000 a square foot seems awfully high to me. Where is that?
Can I take the opportunity perhaps to let Ramash interrupt me as I say the wrong thing, but a lot of, the cost estimates have a fair amount of contingency, which is what we're seeing, and so as we go forward with the DLA proposal, some of that proposal will help to refine these costs that we're seeing here.
One question I have in that sort of sense, because I think when we interviewed the three architectural firms, one of the questions we asked is like, what is the typical cost per square footage per additions? And I distinctly remember DLA telling us something like 250 an hour a square foot per addition they just put on, and with Parkers or something like that, was what had come out today. And so I'm just trying to understand, like, how we go from 250, which I thought was the number, to 1,000.
One of the main reasons is, if you have a small addition, the unit costs really don't go proportionately to what you have with a larger addition.
Now, for example, that classroom, you see that's abutting the bathrooms, you have to actually work in those bathrooms, too, because there's an exhaust in there that has to be rerouted. It's not shown in this, but I have accounted for that in my numbers. So when you say it's about $1,000 a square foot for this room, it's actually going to be touching at a lot of other little things in there which has to be rerouted, fixed, and adjusted.
So you're saying that this is also a need to be smaller?
Exactly. It's varied, and it has to have its own individual mechanical system, too. And as we discuss in a few minutes, we still don't know whether we have enough power, water, enough to service even this small an addition at this stage. We need to find out that answer. And I'd rather give you a high number now and cut it back than to start off with a low number than say it's going to cost you another half a million.
I just wanted to take a minute and make sure that we're not leaving Central off, but we are looking at some additional options. I know the board had asked to see more, just simply truly more options, that we really looked at one option with Central. So that is something that the architect's working on, and that we'll go back to the facilities advisory committee for more discussion. But again, with the goal being to look at that secured front entrance, which is just demonstrating to be a unique challenge, I mean, Central just has a very unique challenge in terms of accessibility and security and the best possible location for that space. So we have engaged the work of a security consultant, we've actually had local law enforcement come over and look at that space, we've had a technology consultant come over and look at that space. So I'm looking forward to bringing updated plans to facilities advisory, having sort of an initial discussion there, and then bringing updated plans to the full board. So we are not forgetting about Central, but that's one that is still, ideas yet to come forward for the board. And then the other idea, we had also talked about community feedback, to do some community engagement sessions to talk about sort of the current status of where all of this facility consideration is. And these are dates that actually Margie went through our district calendar, was able to carve out when there are not meetings, band concerts, special events, et cetera, et cetera. And we've looked at these dates as possibilities, and where we list an AM or a PM, one idea was also to do sort of a coffee with the superintendent, or, you know, a coffee meeting, offer a, I like coffee, an early morning meeting, and then also offer an evening meeting. We're really, we're just trying to figure out the way that, best to engage people. We know that coming at 7:00 PM is not always the easiest thing for community members. A lot of our community members have young children, if they're involved with the schools, so we'd probably offer both. And again, just a question to the board, is this something you'd like us to coordinate for your ability to attend, or for the district to kind of host and sponsor? And if some board members can come, great, and again, no, not a requirement to be present. So just wanted you to be able to take an initial look at that and provide me some feedback on that.
I do think it's important that if a board member, at least one board member can attend one of these things, I think it's really crucial for them to hear that feedback. Pardon me?
I think we can manage one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was going to say, I don't think it's necessarily that all seven be there, but I do think whoever wants to be there, like, if it's, you know, four, five, one, but I do think what would be best is to pick a day or two and publicize it now, so people can, so an AM date, a PM date. I would rather get that out to the public so they can plan, as opposed to worrying about if all seven of us could be there.
It's more important that we have the people that can answer their questions.
Right. Right, because it's not going to be a Q and A with the board. It's going to be with the superintendent.
Yeah, I'm happy to try, but I really appreciate that you're doing AM and PM, because we have people that are at work that would be very upset if it was only AM.
Yeah.
And people that would be reversed upset.
Right.
No, Linda, I think Linda's entirely right. It's doing AM and so...
I just want, I want to hear that.
It's a love fest here. This is awesome.
I don't hear that ever.
She's going to start crying, Joel.
Your moral entirely.
Don't cry.
Holy right.
I'm kidding. Yeah, no, I think, and to get it out in public now.
It's more important to get it out now, it's graduation season and confirmation time of the year.
These dates, there's, what, five dates we found on the...
So I would say plan the two that work best in with, you know, yeah.
With members of the facilities advisory committee to be part of the presentation and then confirm, maybe that we could at least have one board member present. Great, thank you.
Is this a good time to transition to updated financial projections?
Yes.
One last question, if I could.
Okay.
You may.
So where do we stand with that? I think that the DLA was going to look at updating the space and usage study post, if we were to do all of the things that are proposed and move all the students that we're proposing to move, not like K through five students, but the pre-K and the Ladsy and all the rest, what the numbers would look like. Have we, do we gotten that yet, or...
We don't have that. But is that something that the board wants definitely to have?
I would think it should be...
I think it's important just to see that impact.
We should be moving toward a convergence, right?
That's right.
It needs to make sense.
Great, no, thanks for bringing that up, and I know that's still on DLA's list, and I think we're closer now to some more refined ideas and being able to look at that. And so, right, Rich, with that, there's all the other, all the other parts, but wanted people to have the modifications for the Hollywood and Blythe plans, because they do tie into the financial projections, which, as well as the MOU. So now it's Jim and Ramash.
Jim and Ramash.
Jim and Ramash.
The modifications that you just looked at.
And ran them through the projections to see what kind of capital funding we need. And if you remember, in February, we were looking at total program plus the placeholder projects we had for next year of 24.4 million. And after these modifications and with the adjustment on the architect MOU, it dropped to 22.2 million, so $2.2 million plus, using the new options at Blythe Park and Hollywood, and with the adjustment to the MOU that we had last week before the new idea.
Page number two shows the assumptions that are included in your new number, right?
Yes.
So it shows Ames number three, Blythe Park number four, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I took three sheets from our February presentation and then made three new ones to show how they...
When you lift the architect rate reduction, how did you calculate that number?
Well, it, there's two pieces to it. It's the reduction in the .25. Originally it was 8.5, and then when I put these together, it was eight and a quarter. So there's that savings, but when you multiply it by a lower project, there was a savings at that point, too.
Got it.
So the variance could go either way, but I put it with the architect.
You're still assuming 8.25, is what you're still assuming?
When I put this together, yes.
For this, for this purpose?
Right.
Yeah, I think it's sort of a progress statement and not the end statement, right?
All right. Enter next topic. Any questions on the finding? Okay.
So I think we circulated some information in the last couple of days regarding, you know, how we can proceed and how we can get to a better number, really the way we get to a comfort level with our architect and the construction dollars that we are signing. So one of the ideas that we proposed was that, have we just gone through concept, we have multiple iterations, some which look more promising than others, but we still need to proceed to a stage whereby we can get to construction in fiscal year '20. I mean, we need to try and get this done in a very concise manner, you know, meets the community's needs, meets the board's requirements, the budget. One of the suggestions that we made was that we need to move ahead with some very important investigative studies. It is, I mean, whether you decide to do it now or you do it later, it has to happen so that you can start to firm up these numbers. So we asked the architect to draw a list of investigative services, for example, just as what I mentioned a bit before. For example, what are the conditions, the utilities right now in each of these buildings? Can they support an addition? Can they support even a renovation? I mean, with modern equipment? We need to look at all those elements. And the answer right now is, we don't know.
Right.
So we felt that rather than wait and, you know, delay the project, we can get this information right now, we can start doing exactly what you mentioned, historical analysis, you know, what's the impact of that? Talking to the metropolitan, well, Water Reclamation District, what's the storm detention issues that we could face? If we don't answer those questions, there's no way that this number can be firmed up, otherwise we, we'll be at the same position six months down the road. But you may ask me the question, and I'll say, but, and I don't want to give you those kind of answers. We'd rather have those investigative studies completed now, and we said that we could set up a timeframe of between 45 to 60 days whereby the architect, engineers, and consultants, we asked for environmental, soil testing, and multiple investigative tests we performed on all these buildings, they submit, it's going to be in a form for a report. So when we get that report, it's going to identify, for example, if we do Ames number three, what's the, what's the, what kind of systems could we include? Mechanically, how many tons of cooling? So I can give you a much more accurate cost, you know, and then these numbers will start to change, and I'm almost certain they'll go to our advantage. Except in the case of, of course, if there's a surprise, you know, open up a wall and suddenly say, aha, you know, the renovation cannot be supported with existing equipment, we need to bring in brand-new equipment, that changes the equation. But we have contingencies right now to cover a lot of that, and I would like to start to reduce those contingencies to make the number a lot more palatable. But right now, it is not appropriate to cut off those contingencies just to say that we want an $18 million project. And once this is done, these studies are done, we are almost certain that the architect's fee will drop as well, because you've got to remember, they said initially they were, they wanted to support an eight and a quarter percent of construction dollars. Now, they don't know where the construction dollars are going to end up, so it's a bit of a risk that they're taking too. Suppose the numbers came in really low, and, and the number was 8.25 off that, they would end up losing money. So they typically tend to pad the number. But with a more accurate budget and a cost, we spoke with DLA and they said, we'd be willing to give you a lump sum fee, which is far more palatable, we can negotiate that, we can ask them questions on it. Rather than saying 8.25 off a hypothetical number, we'll come back and look at a number today, which is acceptable to the board, and once we have an architect who's signed, I feel that a level of confidence grows, you know, they get to a comfort level of what our expectations are, rather than sitting and waiting to see what the construction dollar is, which will be only released in January of 2020. We've got, there's too much time to be wasted to get to that number. So this is a better approach, and that's the recommendation that we had made, day before yesterday, we had a small conference call, and we discussed these, these issues, and it sounded like it was more positive and a step to take going forward.
It's really an important next step for the reasons that Ramesh just laid out. Uh, I have a question about these next theoretical 45 to 60 days, once this MOU is, you know, conceptually approved. Um, you know, your process at that point, I'm assuming, is to have sort of a weekly conference call with that project team.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And, uh, do you collaborate with the architect on recommended engineers within each of the facets?
They have already identified their engineering team, and they have submitted a proposal to us yesterday.
Okay.
That they are, who they're going to intend, who they intend to use as part of their engineering group for the actual construction documents.
Right.
And that's a good way to approach it, because that way there's some, um, education gained from the investigation, and that same team will deliver the documents.
Right, but there's a budget impact that we're not representing here yet.
Not yet.
On each, in each of those pieces. So I'm, I'm concerned about, um, uh, something of a, of a bid process within each of those disciplines, within MEPs, within structural, within, um, you know, a, any other of those individual aspects.
Right, so as they proceed with the investigation, if you're getting the feedback from them, you know, there'll be an interim report in between too.
Yep.
And in that, they'll be identifying, for example, I'm just saying, you need to put in a new 400 amp electrical panel for Ames to support this. We can price that out. Then my next question to them is, is there existing service sufficient to support that new panel? If they say no, we know that we need to get a new service in, we adjust the price again.
Mm-hmm.
So the number starts to get a lot more concrete, rather than the square foot model where we talked about $250 a square foot. We may end up at something being 475, not a thousand dollars, but it'll be a lot more justifiable, is the way I look at it. When you ask me the question like, does this include this, I can say yes.
Any other questions for Ramesh at this point?
I know water reclamation is an issue. What's the timeframe of dealing with those municipalities?
It's a very long time.
Are you seriously talking January of 20?
So the current plan right now, again, I may be talking a bit outside in the gray area, but the idea was not to stop our initial schedule, because Ramesh had proposed two, two methodologies. The first one was to do more than together, because there's economies of scale that comes into play. You know, if you group some of the smaller projects together with one GC, their overhead cost gets distributed. If you end up with doing them as five separate projects, the overhead costs tend to rise. And there's, I mean, I'm not, it's not an exact science, but that's the theory that we have, and we've seen it happen in multiple school renovation projects. But we really want to do Ames, we want to be able to get through, uh, construction documents by October, the latest we want to put it out to bid is end of October.
Yeah.
So that, before the holiday season, we start to get our bids in.
Okay.
And by January, we want to award, because then you have the pre-construction work and start, because we want to try and finish this before school opens in 2020 September. I mean, that's the idea. Of course, there are things that can hold this and stop it, but that's the plan which we should not get away from right now. Delaying a project is only going to cost more, because construction is not going to come down in cost. You know, there's escalation that adds on every year, so.
Maybe one time that didn't work, it was backwards.
I would say the interesting sort of pragmatic question right now is, they should place two sections of kindergarten at Blithe for fall of 19, which is now just months away.
Yeah.
Meaning that they would need early learners to be out of there to have the available classroom, which means the Ames addition would need to be available to receive those students. So, so the, the sense that are we really moving along with enough specificity that we can hit that target of fall of 20?
Worst-case scenario, couldn't, if you were to, to put a, a section at Blithe, the numbers justify putting this section there, if you don't have kindergarten enrollment, uh, if we had to, could, could you not just like, use the multipurpose room and have the kids eat in the, in the gym like they do?
Yeah, actually, that's, because Mira said we could, we would have to do art on a cart potentially for a year and have the kids eat in the gym. I mean, so it, you know, if we were, yeah.
There's solutions.
Yeah.
So this isn't a voting item now, it will be the next, the next meeting, so I encourage everybody to sort of digest this MOU and, and shoot your questions our way, so we can have it prepared.
I do like this approach that Ramesh has outlined, it seems to be much more, it seems to be much, much more thorough and quantitative and less...
Driving toward, more towards certainty.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I mean, we would really have liked this to have been completed by now.
Yeah.
It really is, should have gone with the concept, I mean, they should have gone in with open eyes to say, we can do this, we can't do this, because you asked a lot of questions that are totally valid, and, I mean, why aren't we doing this? All those answers should be listed right now. You know there's easements at, at Hollywood that prevents the construction on the east edge, then the answer should be right there. It should not be a question we're still asking four months down the process.
Right.
Any other questions for Ramesh or Jim? Now, that is an efficient committee meeting.
Are you trying to say something? About efficiency?
All right.
So is that it?
That's it. Come on, Jeff, let's go.
All right, thanks, guys. Um, so the next, the future meeting is April 17, 2019, regular business, 7:00 PM at Hauser.